I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting here in Halifax for Tuesday, May 27th, 2025. We are in the Selectmen Meetings Room. It is, sorry, no, we're not.
Great Hall.
We're in the Great Hall. Never changed it. Great Hall. And I will start with asking for the Board to vote to enter into Executive Session in the Town Administrator's Office pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21. Local 1700 Halifax Mixed Unit pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, we will also be discussing Executive Session Minutes for April 29th, 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Bill?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. We will look to reconvene here, hopefully around 6 o'clock. All right, sorry, we're a little late, guys. Wanted to be back at 6. We ran a little longer than we expected. I apologize. I'd just like to reopen the Halifax Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 27th. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58, and I'd like to start, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first off, as you might notice here, the Board looks a little different this evening. I'd like to officially welcome Mr. Bill Smith to the Board. Bill, excited to have you on. For those that don't know, Bill was a member of our Finance Committee, former Chief of Police at a local community, so excited to have you, Bill, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So because we have a new Board, we have to do some shifting around. So our first item on the agenda will be the reorganization of the Board, so we will select, I guess we solicit nominations for a Chair for the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Temporary Chair. You know, last year, there's an order of things, and I thought it made a lot of sense as I used into the role, and I thought what former Selectman John Bruno made a lot of sense. So in that light, in that vein, I would like to nominate Jonathan Seelig to be Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Second, okay. To, yeah, we'll go through it. All right, Bill? Are you for?
Oh, yes.
Yes? Tom?
I'm a yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. All right. In that vein, I will make a motion to name Mr. Thomas Pratt as Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
And I am a yes. I will also move to make Mr. Bill Smith the Board of Selectmen Clerk.
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you very much. You'll see with my chairmanship, I know John Bruno, I'll be the first to say that right out of the gate. He was a special guy, but I promise to do my best. In my opinion, all three of us are equal partners in this, and I know all three men up here are men of character. I look forward to working with them. I look forward to getting our hands dirty and trying to lead the town through good times and bad. So I'm excited to get things rolling in this new chapter. All right, with that said, let's move over to the approval of warrants and commitments.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 102 for $134,303. School warrant number 103 for $139,180. School warrant number 103 for $9,239.32. Payroll warrant number 104 for $472,669.68. Vendor warrant number 105 for $131,066.41. Withholding warrant number 106 for $163,963.17. And ambulance commitments, 512-2025 through 518-2025 for $106,521.90.
Do I have a second, Bill?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move to approve the following warrant. Vendor warrant number 107 for $64,027.60 with an add-on vendor warrant number 107 for $2,500.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All right, we'll move down to B on your agenda, the approval of Selectmen Minutes. Anybody like to make a motion there? Bill, I know you're new to the Board. If you'd like to make a vote, make a vote, or abstain, it's your choice.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
That being said, can I do all three at once?
Yeah.
To approve the Selectmen Minutes from April 8th, 2025, April 29th, 2025, and May 12th, 2025.
I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, Bill?
Abstain.
Okay. Passes 2-0 with an abstain from Bill. All right, over to road cuts. We have two road cuts on your agenda here, one for 338 Home Street. Let me just pull this one up really quick. Still trying to find this here. It's here. I swear. It's here. Oh, trench, there you go. All right. Okay. So yeah, so we have two. It looks like they have been signed off by the proper authorities. We have one for 338 Home Street and one for 23 Dartmouth Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve a road cut at 338 Home Street.
I'll make a motion to approve a road cut at 338 Home Street.
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. I'll entertain a motion for 23 Dartmouth Street.
I'll make that motion to approve the road cut at 23 Dartmouth Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, we're moving down to D on your agenda. It's the Proposition Two and a Half Override Committee. I asked Cody to put this on. Essentially, what I wanted to get was the Board's opinion. I think it's no secret that going forward, essentially, almost every town in our area is facing financial struggles. Several have had overrides put on the ballot. If they haven't already, they will be, probably in the following year. My thought was, does the Board have any appetite to start some sort of committee to start investigating the possibility? I know we don't have all of our financials yet, but to me, to wait until January or February to try to tackle this, when we know it's likely coming, I think seems a little short-sighted. So I wasn't sure what the Board's pleasure was, maybe putting together a cross-section of folks to start kicking the tires on the possibility of the override, the possibility of cost savings on the town side, of revenue-generating ideas, essentially just a spitball committee to try to get ahead of this thing before we're staring the budget season in the face. So I'll leave that to you two and see what you think.
I think it's a good idea. The more people that are involved, I mean, get more opinions, get, there's definitely, I believe, it's gonna be, it has to be an override.
Yeah.
Around it, but.
Yeah, it seems to me that an override is more than, more likely than not to appear before us in the spring. I think as much notice as possible. The one fear I have would be in some of those forums that we held in preparation for the last town meeting and that sort of thing, they were very lightly attended, disappointingly so. I just, I think more time, the better. I hate to waste time and resources and people's efforts on something for a whole year unless it gets traction. I think having the right people on the committee would be important to gain traction on the early side. I'm all for it. I think the more that we can do, the better. I just, I worry that there'll be some apathy until the end.
Sure.
That's all.
Yeah, which usually, which is normal.
Right, and then you'll hear the voices at the end and saying, why didn't we do more?
Why didn't we know about it? Right.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Cody, are you hearing in other communities, is it something that they tackle this early, or do you think it's worth waiting on, I guess?
No, communities will tackle it early. Some communities have done committees, you know, investigatory committees, but every committee is different. It means a lot of communities will just rely on their Finance Committee, you know what's coming. So I think if you wanted to move forward with something like this, you need two things. One is you need a clear, what exactly are you looking for them to do?
Sure.
A lot of the things that, the Finance Committee, right, was working on a lot of those things already. And you're not gonna have hard numbers until you have.
Correct.
You know, particularly the schools, right?
Yeah.
So the town gets things.
Cherry seeds in schools.
Things done, you know, February, historically, in the past couple of years. The schools have gotten a little better in the last year, but they, you know, they take a little bit longer. And until you have those, that information, you're not gonna have a great idea. Maybe they can get some projections. And the second is you just need, you need to identify who you want in that group. You don't want it to be too large because you just won't get things done.
Sure.
And you wanna have a good cross-section of town that represents kind of the players.
Yep. Yep. Just spitballing here, I was thinking maybe a Board of Selectmen member, a FinCom member, member of the school committee here at elementary level, and a member of the Silver Lake School Committee, possibly with a citizen-at-large or two. I don't know if you thought that was a good, good match.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the Board. I think the, you need to identify what exactly you want them to do.
Sure.
I think is the important thing.
Sure.
Like, I know you mentioned, you know, revenue ideas. We're always talking about revenue ideas, right?
Okay.
You know, we're geographically challenged in Halifax, so our revenue is sometimes, you know, new growth is challenging. You know, our Boards and Committees have historically given, not been different, not been easy to work with. That also doesn't help, you know, bringing in new growth to town. We're also going into a period of even more economic uncertainty than we have in the past couple of years. So a lot of the, there's not a lot of options for local revenue growth that can be done at the local level. So I think it can be a good idea, I just, that Board needs to be clear on what, what exactly they want this group to do.
Okay.
I think, I think maybe the biggest thing that a group like this could provide is just repeated in advancing education as we get closer. What it looks like, what it feels like, what impact it will have. And I know that the Finance Committee does that, and the budget forums that Cody put on talked about, you know, what it looked like, the average cost per household. The CPA did something very similar. But I think this is, having a larger impact, I think the more notice we can provide people in terms of education and generally speaking, what it feels like would be part of that group's goal, along with other things that you mentioned. But just so that people aren't inundated in the fall when the budget comes in, we're behind, we know we're gonna be looking for this now, eight, 10 months from now. So maybe we can include some of the baseline things in there early, that way people have understanding. The school committee can pass it on to the PTO and so forth. I don't know. That would just be my thoughts.
Do you want me to kick the tires on it a little bit and bring it back to another meeting, a follow-up meeting? I mean, I don't, again, wanna put it down too far, but we are still in May. Let me do, you guys, okay if I do a little bit more homework on this?
Sure.
And get some, some ideas and come back to you guys, maybe possibly at the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Does that work? Okay. Awesome. Appreciate that. All right, we're going down to E. Town Administrator Recruitment Engagement Letter. Community Paradigm Associates. Cody, what's the latest?
Uh, yes, so the last meeting, the Board had asked that I reach out to some consultants to see what they would, what their costs and proposals would be to provide recruitment services to the town for the Town Administrator position. Community Paradigm did the recruitment when I was hired a few years ago. They're one of the leaders in the state for the Town Administrators, Town Manager Recruitments. They were able to provide a proposal. Bernie Lynch, who said he would be interested, he obviously has some familiarity with the town, considering he did the recruitment before. He also is local. He lives right in Plymouth, so you know, he knows the area. So the, what's before you is a letter of engagement, which lays out kind of the, what he envisions as the process. It's, the total is $9,990. So this is under the $10,000 threshold, so it just requires sound business practice. We don't have to go out for bid. And again, I think, you know, Community Paradigm is one of the leaders in recruitment in the state. The process really would be, you know, I would work with him to update the position statement, so it's updated financial information, issues, so on and so forth. He would have discussions with each of you to identify your, you know, what you'd like to see in the next Town Administrator. With that information, he would prepare the full job posting. We'd get that out. He would do outreach to potential candidates, people he knew who may be in the market, who thinks would be a good fit. If the Board chose to do a screening committee, he would meet with the screening committee to review the applications, and they would decide on which applicants to bring in for preliminary interviews. He would assist with the preliminary interviews with questions in that group, and then the committee would choose finalists to go forward to the Board of Selectmen. He would facilitate that process, be involved in the final interviews with that process, and then he could help with contract negotiations once the Board has selected a finalist.
Would he help Cody as far as any sort of interim in the meantime, or have we gotten that far down the road yet?
Yep, so I've asked him to reach out, and if he knew of anyone, I've also reached out to a few other individuals who know several people throughout the state. I've not heard back anything yet, but we have asked him to keep an eye out and do some groundwork. I think you're seeing, as of two weeks ago, there were 30 openings in the state for Town Administrators, Town Managers, which is just unprecedented. So a lot of these people who are retired and do this, you know, they'll jump in for interim role, are tied up right now, but that might be changing. But we are working with him to potentially identify someone.
Awesome. Any questions from the Board for Cody on the process at all?
I will say, I thought the screening committee process worked well when we were doing the go-around with Cody. I don't know if the Board is open to that, but again, it's, we're not a part of that. The screening committee handles it, and then they kind of make their recommendations, and then those recommendations will be brought to us. So the screening committee kind of gets first.
So they narrowed it down to three?
They narrowed it down to three or four, usually somewhere around there. I think you were three when you were here.
Yep, the Board can give direction. So the Board can say to the screening committee, look, we want you to narrow it down to three. The Board could say, we want you to narrow it down to how many ever you think, you know, are viable. Because what I've seen in the past is, you know, if the Board says, we want four candidates, right? The screening committee sometimes won't have four people that they love, and now they're throwing someone out there who might not be a good fit for the town, and you know they're not gonna get hired, and they're just throwing them out there because you said, hey, we wanna see four.
And now their name is out there for their prospective town.
And then you also run into now, let's say there's someone who really sticks out. They hear there's three other people. They may say, well, geez, now my odds are only 25%. I don't know what those other people are right now. I think this isn't worth me, my name being public at this point. I'm gonna back out. So, which you run into that anytime, but just something to consider when you're looking at a direct charge for the screening committee, you know, you may wanna leave it as vague as, you know, recommend finalists that you think are worthy. And if they think there's five worthy, let them bring five forward.
Yeah. How many people are on the screening committee?
It depends. I think when, with you, there were five, I believe. I believe, did we have the accountant, Town Clerk, Police Chief, Fire Chief, and there were some citizens-at-large?
Frank Johnson.
Yep.
And Candy Niffen.
Yep.
So the only thing, and we'll get this, and Bernie can be involved, I'd highly recommend to not include employees. If you do an elected, like the Town Clerk, that's fine, but you create an interesting situation because you have these employees that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, it's up to the Board, but just having gone through this process a couple of times, it, it, it's not the best when you're, you're picking your boss, and now it's an awkward situation. It can be awkward with people.
We don't have to decide right now with the screening committee, right?
No, no, all I need you to do, if you're agreeable, is to approve the letter of engagement and allow me to sign on your behalf.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to, to have the Board of Selectmen take in the Administrative Recruitment Engagement Letter.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, item F. We have a line item transfer from Highway. Says here, we have $1,953.81 from Highway Wages Full Time. Going to, pardon me here, guys. And then it's from, the budget amount for the fiscal year.
It's from Highway Wages Full Time to Cemetery Part Time.
Into Cemetery Part Time wages. Okay. So I will entertain a motion to move that money over.
Second.
All right, I'll entertain it, so.
I'll make a motion to, to move 1953-81.
Sorry, we're resting.
From Highway Wages Full Time to Cemetery Part Time.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, guys, for your patience. All right, next up, New Gen Capital Request for Host Community 69 Summit Street Solar Project. Oh, hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well. If you could just, your name and identify yourself for us, just for the cameras and
You got it.
For posterity.
My name is Laura Fraser. I'm from New Gen Capital Management. I'm the Managing Director of Business Development and Strategy, and New Gen Capital Management is also a owner of a solar site from 2015 located in Halifax. It's a 3.1 megawatt site in town.
Where is that one located, Laura?
Montpontit.
Montpontit?
Montpontit.
Thank you. Yes, and so I was not there when it was built, but I started about nine years ago, right after the site turned online.
Okay. And what would you like to, us to know about the project, and what are you here actually?
Yes, I'm actually here for another reason. So New Gen Capital Management, we are sort of known for the owner-operator of solar infrastructure, that a lot of developers will come to us when they hit a glitch and they have an economic problem. We are pretty known in the industry because we've been around since 2009. We're, we're in Rhode Island, but most of our portfolio is in Massachusetts. We recently had a developer come to us that was developing, the second developer on a site located at 69 Summit Street. I guess this project has been in development for quite some time. The developer came to us because they became known that the solar site was denied from the SMART program, and they knew that with our history, we might have a way to economically save the project and potentially procure it. We did enter into exclusivity so we could take a look at all the project documents, where things were with the interconnection with the town. The interconnections approved, the town has fully permitted the project. The problem is, the denial of the SMART program has left it where you cannot build the site. New Gen is very interested in procuring it, with the one nuance that we do need to make it economically viable, and there is a way. It's a bit of a long shot, and it's a bit of a race to the finish line, but the net metering program is still, there's still enough capacity available to place this project into the net metering program. This is not something I'm here to try to sell electricity to you. That is something that you, that the Town of Halifax would have first dibs on, but what we are asking is if you can help us, help this homeowner and this landlord, help us save the project. New Gen would buy the project if we're able to secure the cap allocation. We're currently in exclusivity. The developer did give us permission to come today and speak to you because he's not, he has no experience in the net metering program, but ultimately, what that would just take, it would not be any cost to the town. It would ultimately mean that the town would become what's called a host customer. Every public entity in the state of Massachusetts can be a host customer up to 10 megawatts. Right now, the net metering program in Massachusetts, I actually printed out this morning where, like, how much is left of the cap in National Grid. It is actually just enough to hold this project, and it's first come, first served. So I have a printout if you would like it. But ultimately, there is 1.2, which would allow us to build a 1.6, which is what was permitted with the town, a 1.6-megawatt DC project. The turnaround time is pretty quick, if you'd be willing to help us out. We are allowed to transfer the host customer at a later time, but for me to go to a town and sell the energy, a lot of them wanna know, what is the price? What is this? And I am trying to grab the cap allocation to make the project economical, so I can close, and I can just take care of the project from this point. What that would take is applying as, with the Department of Public Utility. It's a simple form that you would just need to sign. From there, you would become the host customer, and that would just mean you're signing documents as more of an administrator. New Gen Capital Management usually fills out these forms for you and said, this is what we need to do. We wanna put the electricity on this project. If it's something the town doesn't wanna do forever, I am just honestly requesting to grab the cap for this community member. Allow us to find an off-taker if you did not want to purchase the energy, or Housing Authority, or Police, or Fire Department, any public entity in the town or affiliated with your town would have first dibs on this electricity. But again, that's not what I'm asking today. Today, I am just asking if you can help us help them. So I'll pause there, and if you have any questions, I can clarify.
I just had a couple of quick ones.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned that it was denied from the SMART program?
Yes.
What, I guess, why?
So what had happened is COVID had hit. From what I understand, I was not the developer at the time, but the SMART program's a pretty active program in Massachusetts, and during COVID, I guess the program rules changed. So before they processed the application, because of where the site is located on that property, it became, they would not allow it to be in the SMART programs. They just denied it. The developer feels that you could fight that battle because the application was in, but the, the legal cost it would take, it would not make the project economical.
Viable.
And the same rules they're talking about right now regulatory-wise in the state of Massachusetts for net metering. So what we're trying to do is just get it in, so it's locked in, and the project's safe. So we feel it's economically viable to get the site built in early '26.
Okay. And then you, you wanted us to be a host customer. How many other communities, I guess, in Massachusetts do that process?
Yes, so just in National Grid, I just looked up National Grid for the heck of it. I knew I was gonna get the question. Bless you. So the National Grid area, there, in all of the communities, there are 500 public entities, which are schools, towns, housing authorities, fire departments could be one. Anybody, any public utility could be a host customer. There are 500 that are currently a host customer in the National Grid territory. I, from what I understand, you have bought credits from other towns.
Credits from Brockton.
But you haven't actually been a host or an off-taker to a site, which is why you're not on this DPU site, but because of the relationship, we were like, the best place to start, to save it, we're gonna start with the town. And we could always transfer it later if it's something that you didn't wanna sign a document every five years.
And then, I guess, my next question is liability. What, by signing this document, you know, we're here kind of charged with making sure that we're keeping the town safe financially.
Absolutely.
What, what liabilities, if any, do you foresee for Halifax with this project?
None, really. We do this with the Town of Washington on four different projects, and they are not an off-taker on any. And once every few years, one of our, one of our towns, the Town of Egremont is one. She'll call me and she'll say, oh, my credits are getting too large in this account. We help her review her accounts, and we allocate to different accounts, and they just sign the paper. This is, again, it's not, there's no financial obligation, there's no cost to the town, and honestly, as a thank you for just helping us, we were happy to donate $2,500. It could be a grant, it could be to support an event in the community, as long as New Gen is able to close on this project. Because at this time, I am under exclusivity, it is under my control, but if we can't find a host customer for this, I can't see it as a viable project, and it's a lot of money at stake we'd have to put up to buy the project.
All right, a quick question for Cody. I know we have Kathy on board as our energy consultant. Has she kicked the tires on this, and what's her thoughts on that?
Yeah, you know, Kathy and I have spoken about this at large. You know, the, we haven't reviewed any sort of legal documents, so I, I mean, we can't go into depth about what the actual requirements are. There, there doesn't seem to be a negative to this, but I'm not sure what the benefit is to the community, and that's kind of what, other than, and you also could be setting a precedent, right?
Sure.
Where if you become a host customer for one solar project, for, it's a private company at the end of the day. Does that, you know, open the door?
Open the door for others.
In the future.
Any other questions from the Board?
How big is this site?
It's, it would be a one, about a 1.6-megawatt site. About a week ago, actually, when I first met you, when I came into town to talk, we were only able to build a 1.3 with the net metering. What ended up happening is one project was not in compliance, and the net metering program kicked them out, so the cap actually increased slightly. But just to kind of put this in perspective, the net metering program has not allocated cap, like, increased the cap for what's available for two years. So the fact that this is gonna be sitting here much longer is unlikely, and we won't be able to close with the developer until we're able to lock in that cap, and I think the developer is, does not understand how to do this, which is why we're like, look, we'll put forward the capacity to help you, because one, we're, we are a community member. We have, we have land that we own underneath our site. We are not just a leasur of that Halifax project. We've been here since 2015. We would love to open up educational resources to the town, providing all of the, the data management, a lot of our schools that we work with, they actually, like, will log on and use it for STEM initiatives for local town, you know, educational opportunities. And we've also opened up sites for field trips as well. So these are things, like, we'd be happy to work with you to provide your community in, in order to help kind of add another resource.
I just had a couple of things. I'm not, I guess, well-versed enough to know. When you say 1.6 megawatts, how big is that? What does it look, what does it look like?
Yeah, so, let me see. Dan was really great. He actually gave me, I think it was, it would, it would support 7% of the homes in Halifax.
In comparison to the one on River Street, are we talking bigger or smaller?
I don't know. Oh, River.
The other, the other site.
Yeah, it's down on River Street. It's a sizable solar field down there.
I don't know that one, but my other one, it's about 30% of the other one that I have in Halifax.
Okay. And just for my own edification, when you say the developer, does that mean the And just for my own clarification, when you say the developer, does that mean the same thing as the owner of the property? Is the developer the owner?
The developer is not the owner of the property, they are, they're the leasur of the property at Summit. So there is somebody that developed this project, that is not me.
Okay.
They develop it and they sell it.
So we have a lessy and a lessor in this case?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I guess, I don't even know if this is important, but if I'm looking at the property, is it, where are we, are we talking hidden in the woods? Are we talking running the road?
It's set, no, it's, it's set back behind their, their house.
Okay.
And, and it's next to a field, but it's, it's a ways back.
Okay.
Behind their property.
I'm just thinking of aesthetics of it, there's a soccer field is right there with all the parking, and I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I think there's like trees and there's, there's cover there.
Are we at the point, Laura, where there are any sort of scheme, diagrams yet, or what the project looks like?
Yeah, so this has all been permitted and approved through planning board.
Okay.
Zoning, everything, that's.
So it's gone through all the proper channels already?
Yeah, it was, it, when they came to us, they said it was notice to proceed, which means you could start construction. We dug in a little bit, this was what we discovered. And, and, you know, we offered to help save it. And I, I think it just, it honestly sat for a little too long, and they weren't experienced in the net metering program. So because we, I mean, probably seventy percent of our portfolio is Massachusetts. That's, we started early, early in the, in the state, so we are aware and we feel confident we can do this. But we don't want to kind of jump in and commit that kind of equity until we know that we have a chance to make it happen.
So, so I think it worth, it's worth repeating again, so to be clear, the project has already been okayed by zoning, by planning. It's the original project, it hasn't been up, does it have to go before them again as far as any sort of modifications or updates or anything like that? What we're seeing is the original approval that we got from zoning and from planning.
The only time that I would have to go is if for some reason between now and tomorrow, and when I find a host customer, if that cap allocation goes down, I might need to shrink the site.
Okay, but it wouldn't be bigger, it would be smaller?
No, it will not be bigger.
Okay. Thoughts?
And if you like, I can show you, like, this was as, the dates as of this morning, it is exactly enough for us to lock it in. It takes about three big business days for the Department of Public Utility to approve, two to three. And that's just registering with a signery, which I believe is Cody. From there, you would just register and we would support, we'd help you fill it all out. You would register as a public host customer, and then you would provide us the authorization to just submit the project, and then they hold it. And we, if for some reason we changed the project and there was a whole new interconnection, we would actually lose the spot. So if I didn't feel confident today that we can build this thing at the beginning of twenty-six, I wouldn't have wasted my time. I have, we have no buy-in right now at this point, other than it's a project in our backyard, we know this program well. It sounds like the landlord has had a really difficult time, and we want to do the right thing, so we're trying to help.
How long from start to finish?
Well, if we start, because you'd want to do it when the ground isn't frozen, that's why we're saying twenty-six, because equipment, you know, it takes a while to get your equipment, your transformers. So it's probably going to take from beginning to end, once you start construction, about three to four months. So it's going to be on the middle of, middle of next year.
Yeah, I mean, if it's been approved by zoning, approved by planning, I will say the thing that perked my ears was the location, whereas it's, it's right next door to our soccer fields, our town soccer fields. And I hope, you know, if the board decides to sign off on this, that whoever's running the project will keep that in mind.
Yes, sir.
You know, through construction.
Absolutely.
You know, those soccer fields are special places to a lot of folks here in Halifax, so.
I understand.
I just wanted to make that note.
We're also very familiar with, with many towns, we have solar sites that are on, you know, commercial, commercial spaces. We have solar sites that are on farms, so this is something that we're very used to, and we're going to work with the community to make that happen.
Just a couple of quick follow-ups, maybe one for you, Laura, and one for Cody, and I guess I'll start with Cody. Cody, you said, you know, not sure the upside, no downside maybe, what the upside is. And you said it opens, sets a precedent, you didn't say can of worms, but opens a precedent, starts a precedent. To what end? What are we concerned about there?
It could, I'm not saying.
Right, but if it did, what are we concerned about?
You could have other private developers, it sounds like the cap is almost there, so you might not run into that issue. But if there were more capacity, you could have other private companies come in and look for the town to be a host for this.
Okay. And then, just to be clear, piggybacking on my original question and Jonathan's follow-up, if I'm looking at the property, where is the entrance? Is it between the property and the soccer fields? Is it the other side?
No, it's, it's, so their house is right here, and there is, there's a bit of, like, a pad. And then there's trees where the soccer field is, so it's set back behind the house. And then I think there's a, there's a cover, there's a cover of trees between the soccer field and his house.
Okay.
And then there's also, I believe when I looked at the plans, don't quote me on this, please, but I believe when I looked at the plans, there's also requirement to put arborvitae on the, on the neighbor's side, because there's a neighbor on the other side as well.
So opposite the soccer field, there'd be a line of arborvitae protecting that home line?
Correct.
And it would not be visible from the soccer field either?
Yeah, I believe there's tree cover right there, and we're not allowed to obstruct it.
Okay. Is there a need for conservation here?
They approved it.
They're part of the approval?
So the project itself has been approved.
Fully approved.
They have the green light. If they didn't need the town to be the host for the solar credits, basically, they wouldn't be here.
Right.
They have the green light to build a solar project.
Yeah, okay.
They just need the town to basically serve as the host regarding the electricity credits, the net metering credits.
Okay.
But not, but again, we would offer them, if there's something there, we don't have to decide that now, I would come to you first, but we got time for that. And I'm not trying to rush that conversation. And as a thank you, we want to be able to offer some things to you, I'm not sure who to talk to that, about that, but if we closed on the project.
Could you give us a lot of cheap electricity? Would that, would that work?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I would like to offer to you or an associated, if there is a way that you can help somebody else by giving them credits, because you have too many, you know, you don't need the credits, and there's a way to leverage that, I'm coming to you first.
And just one last thing from me, and then I'll, I'll stop. If we say no, is somebody else next in line, or you're giving a difficult time, is that?
I'm going to have a difficult time because everybody's going to want to negotiate the power, and I can't negotiate the power because I'm not the owner. And this particular developer just doesn't understand, I'm trying to get control of it. And I can close fifteen days following figuring this out. I can't move forward, my pens are down, until I solve this. Now, I have called others, I have called other towns, but ultimately, you know, they want to buy the power and they want to get a discount. I just can't do that, nor do we really need to rush for that. I want to, you know, I want to do this right, and I want to do it in a timeframe that's appropriate for the landlord to make sure that we're securing this and not dragging it out. So I've had a couple, like, consultants, I've had a couple towns come to the table and try to negotiate, but ultimately, that could hurt others. Where, because I have the time, I don't, I really don't want to lean into that right now.
Just to wrap my head around it, Laura.
Yes, sir.
Can you give me a ballpark on like acreage? Like, how, how many acres does this cover? Is it more than a couple? Is it less than one? What's our?
I think five acres, it's, five acres is about a one megawatt. Yeah.
Six acres? So it's decent size.
Yes, and I believe the landlord as well did buy the property behind it, so they also own the property directly behind it as well.
Is it fenced in?
It will be fenced in, yes, you have to fence it in.
Who's responsible when it gets damaged? The town?
I'm sorry, I think.
When it gets damaged, is the town responsible?
No, that's, that's all us. We, so not only do, we develop our own sites, this one just needed some saving. But our company has never sold a site in the history, history of our, since we started. And we develop, own, operate the project. We've, you know, so that's why people come to us when they have an issue like this, because they know that, our history and our consistency. We follow through, we're very close with our landlords. The landlord has actually already met me and Dan and Aaron Rust, and Aaron Rust is the person that will go to the site and will fix it and oversees construction and coordinates with the town. We work very, very closely with those, that, those projects we bring in.
Yeah, I mean, I'm torn, I definitely want to help, I want to help our community member. But I, again, I just get a little nervous about the sanctity of, of the soccer fields. But again, if it's gotten okay's from planning, it's gotten okay's from zoning, okay from conservation, I guess that eases a little bit of my concern. Do you mind if I take a question from a resident here?
Yes.
Chris, come on up, just identify yourself, Chris.
Chris Winowitz, one twenty-ninth Circuit Street. I just have a question for the board, or maybe Cody. You're talking the benefits and maybe the cons to the town. I know these past solar ones we've had in town, it almost seems like there's really no benefit from the town, like tax-wise. They do pilot agreements and it's minuscule. And I think the last ones on River Street, didn't it cost the town years in court to even try to get taxes? So I just see these solar farms taking up vast amounts of land and don't get much back to the town. So I don't know if this one sounds different, or if there will be a benefit?
I mean, so there's always tax revenue, you know, it has been decided for something like this, if it's going to be through a pilot or just taxed as personal property and then the, the real estate. We do have solar pilot guidelines that are in place. And so if you use those guidelines based on the size of the system, I think we were in the twenty thousand plus or minus per year for this, if we were to do a solar pilot, again, that's, that's an estimate, because we were just looking at, you know, high-level figures. You know, but, but I think the important thing here is, this is, this, this, what the board is voting on tonight is not to allow this project or not. The board is only voting to serve as the host community or not. The project, if they found another avenue, could still move forward.
Sure.
With, as a solar, you're not approving the solar project.
Right, right. It would just be markedly more difficult.
It could be, based on the feedback.
Yeah. And I, just, just to add on to that, I'm not associated with River, I don't, I don't know which one River is. But for our site, Halifax Solar, I believe it was the first in town. I believe the pilot agreement we struck back then was forty-five thousand five hundred dollars per year. Nugent has never missed a payment.
I can tell you too, in speaking with our assessor, Nugent was very good to deal with, unlike some other companies that we dealt with.
I know her personally. I, I used to oversee the operating side of the company, and I know the assessor very well.
Whole different ballpark over there, yeah. Yep.
So I guess, not to jump anybody here, I guess, I mean, I'm always the skeptic, I feel like.
That's why we love you, Tom.
But I would just, the more we talk about it, if it's passed ABC and XYZ, and it's now, they're just looking for a way to get to the finish line, and it means tax revenue for a town that is facing an override.
Correct.
I don't, you know, my personal feelings maybe don't come into play as much, but I don't know that it's responsible for us to deny something that's gotten this far. Especially if in goodwill, they're looking to maybe make a donation or what you'd mentioned, you know.
Yeah.
Help the project or something towards that end, I mean, not that that's the thing, I guess that's, I'm leaning, I'm leaning that way just because I don't, who are we to say that, you know, this isn't appropriate based on that, or XYZ?
Sure.
And they just maybe need a boost to get to the finish line. I mean, I am nervous about setting a precedent, because that opens doors, but, you know, if we're talking, what do you say, forty-five thousand for Halifax Solar, and this is two-thirds that size or something like that, then that's money we're leaving on the table, and I don't know that that's the right thing to do either.
And that's just on the personal property, I'm sure there's increase on real estate, which even with this landlord, is going, the project is going to be responsible for, per the agreement, so.
And you're sure about the soccer fields being untouched? I know that's not, I know that's not.
It's not enough.
Yeah, they, from the look of it, I was reading the minutes and everything, they were very, very specific about the soccer field and protecting it.
Because it sounds like this might be a revival, and I would just hate to see that disturbed and then regret.
Can they take a hard penalty shot off the panels? That's okay?
They might, I mean, in the town of Pittsfield, they were BBing and at the YNCA, and we were out there probably monthly fixing the pedals, but we're used to it.
All right. So I will make a motion to allow the town of Halifax to be a host community for the sixty-nine Summit Street solar project.
Pending the legal review.
Pending the legal review, thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. All right, next up, we have a live entertainment permit for Farmer's Market, we have a change of location. And what happened here, I think they're moving their location, originally it was going to be on the Halifax Town Green, and now it is moving over to the Halifax Congregational Church. Is that the parking lot, Pam, or?
Or the front.
The church.
Church, okay.
Church parking.
Yeah. And it's, again, every, all the information is the same, the dates are the same, the, essentially, all the guts of it are all the same. It's been okayed by fire, police, Board of Health, building inspector, so we just need an okay from us as a change of location.
I would make a motion to approve the change of location for the Farmer's Markets and the dates provided.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. All right, next up, a live entertainment permit from Mr. Ron Jerome? Ron Jerome, is Mr. Jerome here?
No, I didn't have him come here, this is like his fourth time doing this.
Oh, okay.
So I said that.
That he was all set?
Yeah, because he's never had an issue.
Okay. Let me pull up on my magic machine here. Next page down, thank you. All right, so yeah, so this is for a live entertainment summer cookout for July fifth, twenty twenty-five at Residence on Spring Street. And you were waiting, Pam, I know we got the okay from the police chief, the Board of Health, any luck on fire yet?
I didn't hear anything bad from him by four o'clock before I left, but.
Okay.
But if wanted to do a contingent.
Yeah, I think what we could do, if the board was okay with that, we will allow it contingent on the okay by the fire chief, if that's all right, if anybody wants to make that motion.
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the live entertainment permit from three to nine PM on July fifth at fifteen Spring Street, contingent upon the fire chief and the fire department signing off.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. All right, next up, Cody, we have our updated purchasing and procurement policy, a lot of Ps.
Yeah, so we implemented a purchasing and procurement policy in twenty twenty-three. Prior to that, the town had no such policy in place. What this does is it really just ensures compliance with state law. But it also makes sure that there's eyes on our purchasing, so departments aren't just purchasing without some sort of oversight. We historically had required, required purchase orders for anything that was under, I'm sorry, over twenty-five hundred dollars. This would increase that to five thousand or more for purchase orders. So everything else remains the same, state law still requires, you know, anything between ten and fifty thousand, you have to get three proposals or from a state bid. Over fifty, you have to do a full procurement, invitation for bids, a request for proposals. That, none of that changes, the only thing that changes is the threshold for a purchase order, which, we set purchase orders up so they come to me as the chief procurement officer. I review them to make sure procurement's been followed, but also to make sure that the money is actually in the account for what they're making the purchase from. And this should be done ahead of time, right? So what we, historically, what was happening was the department would purchase something, submit an invoice. They may not have followed procurement, but now they've already made the purchase, and now what do we do?
It's too late.
We could be in violation, so the purchase order makes sure that we're following proper procurement and that we actually have the money and that it's appropriate to be using it from that account, so just that threshold change.
Okay, and it's still well under the state legal limit too, we're just going from the twenty-five hundred to five thousand?
Yeah, this would be updated as of July first, this, going into the next fiscal year. And you see, this, these thresholds are what you see in most towns. Implemented a, we implemented a smaller threshold at twenty-five hundred, because it was such a new policy, the town had never had this policy before. So we implemented that to get people used to the policy, it's been two years, everyone has done a nice job, is comfortable with it, so it makes sense to increase it.
Loosening up the reins a little bit. Good.
Does it take both the accountant and Thomas Rea to sign off?
So the accountant has to sign off, yes, because they enter it into our, our system. But I sign off as the chief procurement officer, or the town administrator does.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to increase our purchase order policy from twenty-five hundred to five thousand.
Sure, I'll make the motion to update our purchasing and procurement policy, increase the limit from twenty-five hundred to five thousand.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero, passes unanimously. All right, we're going down to letter K, contract amendment with tie and bond for landfill monitoring. Take it away, Cody.
Yes, so we have a contract in place with tie and bond to do our monitoring of the landfill, the Hemlock Lane landfill. It's required by DEP. We were notified by DEP in November or December that we were going to have to start testing for PFOS, you've probably heard about this. And it's expensive, we have eight monitoring wells there, DEP's requiring that we test them two times a year. And depending on the, the lab test alone can cost about five hundred dollars per monitoring well. Right, so if you look at lab costs alone, you're at potentially eight thousand. So we did secure proposals from Ty and Vaughn, who has the current contract, and we reached out to a few other vendors. Ty and Vaughn ended up matching the lowest price that we received, so it made sense.
To stay on.
Yeah, to stay on and continue with them. So this is to amend the contract, it increases it by nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and that covers. hundred dollars, and that covers us for the next, for our current fiscal year and fiscal twenty-six.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to amend, uh, the contract agreement with tie and bond for landfill monitoring, increasing it by nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-six.
That's the current fiscal year.
Current fiscal.
It's amended to, and then it goes into the next fiscal year.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, GATRA representative?
Yes, so we are part of GATRA. Uh, we joined about a year ago, I believe. So as part of that, the town has a representative that serves on the advisory committee, um, that had been me, uh, historically, but with my departure coming, um, in the next month or so, the board will need to, uh, choose a new representative to GATRA.
Any thoughts as to who that could be? Speak now, forever hold your peace?
It's not a heavy lift, um, you know, it's, it's meetings once a month, and I think they might even take July off, they take one of the summer months off. Um, but it's, it's good to make sure the town's represented. I think, you know, it's not a bad idea to have one of the board members do it, uh, and then you can always have the new town administrator take on the role, um, when, when they're in, in place.
Were the meetings held?
Zoom.
They're virtual.
You can go to the Totten City Hall if you want, but I've, I've always elected.
Zoom might be a better fit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, that's a good point, Cody. We could, we could assign it, um, temporarily, essentially.
Yeah.
Until we get our new town administrator in place.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody?
I'll do it.
Yeah? Is it okay?
Yeah.
All right, we'll put the new guy on it. All right, I'll make a motion, uh, to appoint Bill Smith as the GATRA representative for the town of Halifax.
Maybe I do want to, no, I'm just kidding. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, uh, we have an M O A. for acting library director, letter M. on your agenda.
Yep, so this is, uh, an memorandum of agreement with Maria Bumpus, who's our assistant, uh, library director. So you know Jean Galan retired.
She did.
Um, and we had secured a new library director, but that fell through. So we are working on a new recruitment, but in the interim, Maria has graciously agreed to, uh, step up to be acting library director. Uh, the compensation is as laid out in the, in the, uh, wage and personnel bylaw, which is ten percent less than the, um, the pay for that position. So that's what this was equals to. And then it's, right now, um, she's only thirty hours a week, so Bumpus is up to forty, um, interim.
Pretty straightforward, as far as, since we had that, that bylaw put in place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right, I see no problem. Any comments or anything from the board?
Yeah, a couple members of the trustees here as well, I'm not sure if they want to say anything.
Sure, yeah, that's true. Um, Ms. Snow and Bus, or Hills, would you, any comment or anything? Would you like to come up and speak, or you guys are just here in support?
Just here in support.
All right.
We, uh, I guess we just want to go on the record saying Cody had done an excellent job of, um, the search process, and we just, I think, it monitored a lack of communication, um, among the parties in terms of, um, securing her. So now we have to go back to the beginning, and, you know, we're, we're definitely in the, um, process. But Maria is very capable, we very, feel very confident that she can, um, do the job. We're still very stressed in terms of number of hours of coverage, but we're working on that, um, with the, um, with the staff and the, and the trustees.
Awesome. Thank you, Ellen.
And I would just, um, I mean, should we, should, I don't know if it's, uh, ideal to keep them separate, but it should be, should it be mentioned about letter N. here on our bullet agenda as a, as a related item?
Uh, sure, yeah, so as part of this, you know, Maria's served as the assistant director for a while, but, um, Jean has graciously agreed to come back and provide assistance as needed. So the trustees, I attended their meeting last week. Um, what the, the letter N. is, is a consulting agreement with Jean Galan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's really two, two pieces. So the first is if she serves as like a management consultant, um, you know, Maria has questions on reporting, things like that.
Yep.
It's a rate of fifty dollars an hour, which is a consulting rate. And then if she's needed to cert, to work at the desk, at the trustee's discretion, um, it's a rate of twenty-five dollars an hour.
Okay.
But it's really, and Jean is, letter N. is really in conjunction with having no library director in place, correct?
Yeah.
Because that wasn't.
The two of them, yeah.
Right, but this wasn't, this wasn't in play when we thought we had somebody.
No.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, right, so.
And, and then, uh, oh, day of days, when we do find somebody, this will essentially revert back to.
These will both revert back.
Revert back to what they were.
The way with Maria, Maria will revert back to her role as assistant director, and then Jean, um.
Yeah. This is a get us through.
Right, makes sense, makes sense. I just thought maybe addressing them both together was.
That's smart. Sure. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the M O A. for our acting library director, Maria. I always mess up Maria's last name. Bumpus.
I make a motion to approve the M O A. for acting library director, Maria Bumpus.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. And then N., might as well go through and do that one as well.
Similarly, I would approve the, uh, con- uh, library consulting contract for Jean Galan as printed and listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Yep, uh, now we're down to O., the revised agreement with Lighthouse Legal Services. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
So, uh, Lighthouse Legal Services is attorney Jeff Dolan. Jack previously served as our labor counsel. Um, so Jack has actually served in two kind of facets for us. The first is, is our labor counsel over the past couple of years, and the second is, he serves as this H R. on-demand service. Um, so, you know, we don't have a dedicated H R., which, you know, we have, uh, you know, well over a hundred employees, so to not have H R. is, um, granted.
Yes.
But what, um, prior to me being here, the board had brought in attorney Dolan to provide, um, H R. kind of services, so really a, a foolproof system where for a five thousand dollars a quarter, you, you call him, you, you, he works whatever you need with H R. Um, we have since, uh, brought on new labor counsel, so our, his agreement needs to be reflected that he's no longer labor counsel, he's just.
He's just H R.'s.
Yep. And that if you approve, I would request that you allow me to sign on your behalf.
Yeah, no, he's, Jack's fantastic, uh, super happy with his services that he provides to the town. I think, as you say, Cody, uh, you wouldn't have a business this size without an H R. department. Um, I just think it would be irresponsible, so, uh, I think Jack does a great job insulating